Hi, everybody. Great crowd. Nice. Give everybody a chance to find a seat. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, this meeting's notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on April 29, 2024, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of May 3. All municipal clerks of the townships, the boroughs, within the regional district, have been notified and the requirements that was posted with me on April 29, 2024. Please ride and join me in the press.
Did you get any cases from the board?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda, we printed prior to the start of the meeting, the board also announced that it is discussing perception number three, the suspension and discipline report. For exception number four, the board discussed the memorandum agreement with Stodil and Maintenance Association. And the board also discussed for number seven, the implications of the passage of the legislation, Assembly Bill 4161.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda for April 25?
Second.
Any discussion, Board?
Just one item of note, Mr. President. Just note that the minutes do reflect that the vote that was taken at the last meeting for the memorandum agreement with Stodil Maintenance Group did pass by a weighted vote of 4.3 to 4.2. It was a little closer than anticipated only because of the necessary extensions of the School Ethics Act, the fact that we had a member that was absent. But it did pass.
You needed a calculator.
And I needed a calculator.
Okay, thank you. Vote call, Mr. Acetola here. Mrs. Bruno? So this is a vote on the minutes. So to Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Communications is on file with our board secretary? And now?
I'm here.
Now I'm going to throw it over to the district chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening, and thank you for just a couple of minutes of your time as we conducted some of our official business to open the meeting. But good evening, and welcome all to the Board of Education Student Recognition Ceremony this evening. My name is Dr. Hazel. I'm the Superintendent of Schools. And we are all so excited to join, to celebrate all of you and all of our award recipients assembled here this evening for their outstanding accomplishments and achievements. Each of you have worked so hard to earn this recognition, and we are so proud of each and every one of you. To our teachers, advisors, SICA's, supervisors, and administrators, your commitment to our students, our community, and our programs is so appreciated. What I know to be true in the Freehold Regional High School District is that all of us are committing, committed to helping our students reach their potential. We know at the start to ensuring student success really starts with building relationships. That's something we are extremely proud of here in the regional, and building connections with our students so that they are able to continually build confidence in themselves and maximize all the opportunities that are available to them in the Freehold Regional High School District. This really paves the way for our students to engage at the highest level in their classrooms, on the field, and in the community. These regional foundational hallmarks lead to student learning and growth. So when I think of the regional, relationships, engagement, and growth, those are our hallmarks for each of our students here in the Freehold Regional High School District. Tonight's program and each student's success in the district is a testament to our continuum of work. To the parents that are here this evening, you have been with us on the journey, and a special congratulations to all of you in being able to celebrate this great accomplishment of your child this evening, and we are so happy to celebrate that moment with you tonight. Before proceeding with recognitions, I'd really like to thank our Board of Education. They are the backbone of this school district, time and dedication in servicing this outstanding community. Not just, you know, partaking in board meetings, but also in various committee meetings, and they are ever so present in our buildings and in all of our activities. Again, I want to congratulate all of our students, our award recipients, this evening. Again, like always, we ask for your full attention during the program. We have an extensively big audience here this evening. We are so excited to celebrate with all of you. We will keep the program to an hour, but we really want our entire community to be here to celebrate all of our students across the district that are being recognized. So really, just take a moment to relax, to enjoy in your mind, celebrate the wonderful accomplishments and the work that you have put in this school year, whether it be in the classroom, in the community, or on the field, or the court. So to kick us off this evening, Mr. Broverman, who is the principal of Howell High School, he is going to present his students, you know, to this audience. And again, I am so proud of each of our students. I look forward to hearing your name and your accomplishment this evening. Congratulations to all, and enjoy the evening.
I'd like to ask Mr. Bruno, our board member, to come down and join us in celebrating the students at Howell High School. As Dr. Hazel said, I'm Jeremy Broverman, the proud principal at Howell High School. It's great to see the crowd out here, and I'm excited to celebrate our students. I will recognize all the students who have won activities, or clubs, or within our magnet programs, and Mr. Bruno, I'm sorry, Mr. Mihen will do all the athletics. So, you know, as Dr. Hazel said, thank you to the Board of Education, Central Office. Obviously, ongoing support and allowing us to have celebration nights like tonight, and of course, our board members who are supportive of Howell. So I'm first, so there will be some things that I'm going to go over tonight and talk about and go in a little bit more detail so that when my colleagues go, they, I will already have addressed some of the accolades that go with certain awards. So bear with me, I will maybe be a little bit longer. First, and other schools do have this as well, we have one incredible rising senior at Howell High School who got admitted to New Jersey Governor's School in Sciences. So just a little update about what Governor's School is. It is a three-week residential program where students are immersed in intense college-level research, and the sciences is at Drew University. Governor's School is made up of the most talented students in New Jersey. The admission process is extremely competitive. In recent years, 15% of the nominees were accepted. And at this time, I'd like to call up Annette Tran, who is going to go through. Okay, so I'm going to ask the members of the Allshore Symphonic Band of Howell High School, please come forward, and as you come forward, I'll talk about you and let everybody know what your accomplishments are. So come on forward if you are Allshore Symphonic Band. Howell High School had seven students this year that achieved the Allshore status honor. The audition requirements for Allshore Band, Allshore Symphonic Band, are performing a memorized scale or scales, playing a piece of music from the New Jersey All-State Band solo list, and sight reading as well. So congratulations to our students who have achieved. Adrianne Abussy, Julia Epstein, Kaitlin Ursia, Jerry Rogerson, Sophia Tameo, and Jacob Wazika. Congratulations. Next up, we have Allshore Chorus, Howell High School, I'm sorry, All-State Chorus, my apologies. Howell High School had five students who achieved the honor of All-State Chorus. In order to make All-State Chorus, one must sing a chosen scale with an exceptional tone quality. In addition, each note on the scale must be impeccably in tune in the center of each pitch. How was that, Mr. Quintafa? Good, thank you. Okay, so would you come forward at this time? And the advisor is Casey Shields, and our students are Caleb Brown, Zara Gochalenko, Ava Rea, Josh Rivera, Alyssa Prey. Congratulations. Okay, next up is the New Jersey State Music Tech Festival, and this is a state-level competition where Howell High School had three students named best in three different categories. Amazing accomplishment, and this is part of our MVP program, our music and video production program. This is on the music side. The advisor is Mr. Joe Quintafa. First, and come up as, we can all start coming up right now, and I'll explain what everybody has won. First, we have Macy Capone. Macy won Best Cover Remixes and Loop-Based Projects. Her work, done in a digital manner, included arrangements, recordings, and pre-existing songs, song samples, and projects incorporating a combination of original material and pre-recorded loops. She was scored on Originality and Creativity. Zoe Libowitz won the Best Original Composition. Her work, also done digitally, included traditional and/or electronic instruments. She had to incorporate a pre-recorded loop in a creative manner. And lastly, Ricardo Pola won the Best Applied Technology, and his work encompassed the use of technology while creating a new electronic musical instrument via software. So congratulations to those two students. Now I'd like to call up the eight students who, and you can start coming up now, who won a national competition referred to as the Count Basie Breakthrough Film Festival. The Count Basie Breakthrough Film Festival is a national competition held in Red Bank at Count Basie Theater. This year, we had eight students win the distinction of National Champion. Five of our students won Best Sound. Two of our students won Best Editing, and one young man, guy right here, won for Best Sound, Editing, and Documentary. All of the students' work first had to go through a rigorous acceptance process to even be considered, and they are all submitted through an MP4 file, even to be acknowledged to have a chance to win the competition. And having eight winners is incredible. These people are from our music and video production as well, they are on the video side. First, we have Elijah Berg, who won for Best Sound in Haunting of White Hill. We have Genevieve Braun, who won for Best Sound as well for Haunting of White Hill. We had Virginia Foltz, who won for Best Sound for Haunting of White Hill. They were on a team. Then we have Trenton Conapac, who won for Best Sound of Haunting of White Hill, but also won for Best Editing of Morgan and the Waves. Justin Marinelli won for Best Editing, Morgan and the Waves, Best Sound, Haunting of White Hill, and Best High School Film, The Rain Song. Incredible job, Justin. Then we have Alana Vici, who won for Best Editing of Morgan and the Waves. We have Rachel Valette, who won for Best Sound of Haunting of the White Hill, Best Editing for Morgan and the Waves. And lastly, King Andre Paris, who won for Best Documentary of Against All Odds, The Life of James Wong Howe, Best Editing of Morgan and the Waves, and Best Sound for Haunting of White Hill. Again, this is a national competition, and our video production program obviously rocked it and took away almost all of the awards. So congratulations to them. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our supervisor of extracurricular activities, the ever-so-hands to Mr. P. B.
Thank you, Mr. Broverman. I'm going to go over our athletics. We had probably the best winter in school history. Our girls dominated across the board in every facet. It was incredible. The individual awards I'm going to call up first are for wrestlers. We have Giovanna Faro Byers, who took seventh down in Atlantic City. Kylie Gudewitz was the 114-pound state champ in Atlantic City. First female wrestler. And then Tanner Hodgens, another one of our wrestlers. Tanner took sixth place down in Atlantic City. Quite an accomplishment. Congratulations to her. Next, I'd like to call up our cheerleading team, our competition team. Girls, please head on up. The team is led by our coaching staff of Jan Markovic, Ashley Downs, Courtney Koloski, and Zoe Rosenmerz. The Howell High School competitive cheer team this year was the All-Music Mega Division State Champion, Group Four All-Music State Champion, as well as a merit cheer Group Three Mega All-Music National Champions at Orlando, Florida. The girls are Natalia Chininowski, Olivia Sinchara, Olivia Engel, Allison Finnegan, Caitlin Finnegan, Ryan Foley, Ashley Goodman, Olivia Henry, Kylie Lane, Marley Mara, Amelia Moret, Juliette Anapoli, Rihanna Pine, Alexandra Overtazi, Gia Nicole Sarah, Avery Vasquez, Gianna Berenger, Sophia Byrne, Chelsea Candino, Gabby Cortez. The next three I'd ask to please step forward. Haley Coyle, Jayla Davino, and Gina Overshaven. These three ladies were named to the NJCDCA All-State Cheer Team. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call up our girls bowling team. Girls, come on up. Girls were led by Coach Robert Russell and Coach Jennifer Thompson. Girls were named South Jersey Group Four Sectional State Champions, as well as overall two-time repeating Group Four Overall State Champions. The girls were also named NJ.com Bowling Team of the Year. Holly Stapleton, Alyssa Ricchio, Melissa Bascone, Juliette Hughes, Riley Palmeis, Megan Palfrey, Sophia Roger, Kaylee Jermadick. Please step forward. She was named Second Team All-State. Madison Lewis, please step forward, named First Team All-State. Congratulations to her. The next team I'd like to please call up is our girls basketball team. Our basketball team is led by coaches Santa Pietro, Matt Colson, and Brian Blood. The girls were A-North Division Champs, as well as first time ever in school history, Central Jersey Group Four Sectional State Champions. Congratulations, girls. The team consists of Gabriella Mambo, Kylie Bean, Kendall Bleakley, Gabriella Carpenter, Mackenzie Maloney, Bella Rose Marino, Kira McCown, Angela Neves, Veronica Neves, Ashley Smith, and Peyton Smith. Coach Santa Pietro was also named Shore Sports Network Girls Basketball Coach of the Year. Congratulations to our girls.
Okay, I'm back. My, the way I had it stapled was clubs, then sports, and then I had TSA for clubs, so we're going to go back to the clubs. Sherri Roses is our TSA advisor. Probably a, one of the biggest powerhouses in the state of New Jersey as far as TSA goes. Sherri Roses, our advisor, and she always seems to bring a ton of success to Howell High School. So would the members of TSA who won awards, please come forward. So the TSA competition was held on April 27 at the College of New Jersey, and we won numerous awards. Our competition event for first place for the Senior Solar Sprint, which was the state champion, team of Thomas Campbell and Brandon Reynaga. Congratulations. Digital Video Production was a team of William Alsiger, Nick Rosigio, Emma Rodriguez, Caitlin Thomas, and Hayden Vigador. Board Game Design Champion was a team of Nick Munzes and Dan Radidov. And our chapter team was made up of, first place as well, was made up of Liam Byrne, Liam Daly, William Daly, Harrison Feldman, Ben Jarman, and Christina Mencenko. Our Structural Design Engineering Champions were Ryan Cruz and Justin Zawitaske. And we are moving on to our National TSA Conference, which we qualified for, in Orlando, Florida in June of 2024. And we also had many achievement recognition awards, which is, Sherri, you were telling me, like, the great, four in the whole state, four in the entire state. So I'm just going to name them real quick. We have Georgia Appleshalvi, she was the National Champ winner, Nicolette Cardino, Ewan Papola, Dakota Giordano, Caitlin Thomas, and Ariana Tony. Only four in the entire state were, won this competition, and like I said, our TSA program is incredible, and thank you to Jen Hyer and to Sherri Roses. At this time, I'd like to welcome up our next principal, who will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Broverman. Please bear with me tonight. My allergies are not doing well. So, good evening. My name is Dr. Visha Selso. I'm the principal of Freehold Township High School. And first, I would like to congratulate all of the students who are in attendance tonight, being recognized for their outstanding achievements. I would also like to thank the parents for all of your support that you have provided to our students to make this evening possible. I would like to invite Mr. Christopher Provo, the SICA of Freehold Township High School, and Mrs. Elizabeth Higley, Board of Education member for Freehold Township, to come to the podium to assist in the presentation of rewards. The Girl Scout Award is the highest and most prestigious award a scout can earn. The award acknowledges each recipient's power and dedication to not only bettering herself, but to making the world a better place for others. To obtain this award, high school students must complete a project that they may tackle a broad spectrum of important issues. I would like to call to the podium Tyler Douglas, Leah Blue, and Olivia Shulman. A team just started the recognizing for earning their Girl Scout Award. To earn the award, Tyler completed a project about mental health awareness and self-love. She painted murals and positive quotes in churches to remind people that they are loved. In addition to the murals and positive quotes, she raised funds and donated money to Black Girls Smile, an organization that empowers the mental well-being of black women and girls. Congratulations, Tyler. She learned how to create and taught lessons to promote cultural creativity in her Hebrew school as a means of increasing pride in the culture of Jewish students. Leah also made a website. Congratulations, Leah. And Leah is also a finalist in the 2024 National Merit Scholar Program. To help her to earn this award, Olivia Crochet donated over 100 baby hats for the Center State NICU. She also taught two crochet classes at Chelsea Regional House, and congratulations, Olivia. The Eagle Scout is the highest rank in the Scouts BFA program. It's a prestigious milestone that requires years of hard work, service, and determination. To become an Eagle Scout, one must earn a total of 21 merit badges and demonstrate scout spirit, service, and leadership. A service project must also be completed as well. Daniel Sweetman, if you came in the back of the auditorium, please come up to the podium at this time. Congratulations, Dan, for earning your Eagle Scout Award. Would Ellie Drucker please come up to the podium at this time? At Freehold Township High School, we house the Animal Botanical Sciences Academy. Students from throughout the regional district can apply and if accepted, attend Freehold Township High School to focus on various topics covering agribiology. All students are members of our school's chapter of the FFA, Future Farmers of America. We had one student earn first-place accolades in the Division Three FFA Agroscience Fair and Social Systems, where research project was titled "A Retrospective Study on the Role of Pets During COVID-19 Quarantine." Congratulations, Ellie Drucker. At this time, I would like to call up the FTHS Allshore Symphonic Band members. Sixteen members of our band were named to the Allshore Symphonic Band. Congratulations to the following students. Thea Ikazian, Caroline Zainer, Summer Calaruso, Victoria Sanchez Marquez, Alyssa Florio, Kevin Sweeney. I also want to recognize Kevin for being an Eb Alto clarinet first in the shore. Bridget Mary O'Brien. Bridget Mary O'Brien, Bridget Mary O'Brien is the bass clarinet, number two in the shore. Riley Tellarigo Deval, All-Shore Symphonic Band Principal Baritone Sax, number one in the shore. Anna Katyn, Sophia Briggs, Sarah Lutzey, Devani Tandem, Annabelle Fredericks, Trombone, number two in the shore. Nicola Jokesh, Jamila Abreu, and Carly Jones. Carly Jones is the Principal Tapany, number one in the shore. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Provo to do the athletics.
Athletically, Freehold Township is celebrating multiple accolades as well. First, I'd like to ask Emma Zwatski to please come up. Emma is not here, but Emma is the Track and Field Group Four Champion in the Indoor 1600 and the Indoor 3200. She placed second place at the Meet of Champions for the 1600 and third place in the Meet of Champions for the 3200. She was also named to the Second Team All-State. Congratulations, Emma. Next up, I'd like to congratulate Joe Dominguez. Joe was a member of our bowling team, and he was the Shore Conference Tournament Champion. He was also named to the Second Team All-State and First Team All-Shore. The next athlete is Rosa Bella Kearns. Rosa Bella placed fifth in the state of New Jersey at 138 pounds in the 2024 NJSI Wrestling State Championship. And our next athlete is another wrestler, Danielle Forlenza. Danielle is a Shore Conference Wrestling Champion and the NJSI Central Region Wrestling Champion at 152 pounds. Our next group is actually a spring sport that won their Central Jersey Group Four State Championship last week. I'd like to call up our golf team. This is their golf team. And at the sectional tournament, they also finished second overall, so they participated in the Tournament of Champions yesterday. The members of the golf team are Christian Clemowitz, Angel Patel, Matt Sisneon, Corey Gold, Matt Gatos, Ben Jacobson, Nate Fury, Michael Pucci, Gianluca Tremboli, Ben Store, and Andrew Mancusi. Congratulations, gentlemen. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Selsa.
How's everybody doing? All right, I had one come in late. Jake Diaz, one of my male bowlers, was First Team All-State. Jake, come on up.
Congratulations again to all the FTHS District Medal winners. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Brian Donahue, Principal of Colsonak High School.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just want to thank the Board of Education and our Central Office Administration for putting together this night. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Rassetola, Colsonak Township Representatives to the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education, come down and help us pass out medals. And I got to pass this off to this. We have one award winner tonight that we want to recognize, the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. The President's Council on Service and Civic Participation founded the President's Volunteer Service Award to recognize the important roles of volunteers in America's strength and national identity. This award honors individuals who serve as positively impact communities in every corner of the nation and inspires those around them to take action too. So this is a national-level award. I would like to call up Suhani Mahajan to the podium, please. Suhani is a Colsonak High School sophomore. She was recognized for her commitment to her organization and was presented the Presidential Volunteer Service Award Gold. As part of her volunteering team, she's dedicated many long hours to working on volunteer programs for her temple and mentoring youth campers for a summer camp that is run out of her temple. All this resulted in over 100 hours of leadership and service hours, and she was recognized for that. So congratulations. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. David Zwors, our Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, who will take us through the athletic program.
Thanks, Dr. Donahue. I'd like to call up members of our Boys and Girls Indoor Track Teams who were able to make it tonight. Guys, come on up. Our Boys and Girls Indoor Track Team both won the Central Jersey Group Three State Sectional Title. This was the girls' fifth straight state title, and the boys' indoor second straight. So this was the second straight year that we swept Boys and Girls. The boys' team, Edin Alpa, Jay Adamala, Lucas Bavaro, Andrew Beskelides, Asher Burgess, Nick Burrow, Hunter Salpupa, Matt DiGennaro, Brandon Kerwin, Andrew Crock, Charlie Lakowski, Jacob McNamara, Mason McQuig, Lucas Sanginari, Kyle Shandall, and John Shapiro. And then also a shout-out to four members of the boys' team, Jay Amidala, Andrew Crock, Jacob McNamara, and John Shapiro. They were also the 4x800 Meet of Champions first-place winners. So congratulations to them. And the girls' team were Lydia Beresnitsky, Juliana Brown, Jocelyn Camra, Michaela Curry, EU Franklin, Michaela Hartman, Julia Maldonado, Natalie O'Connor, Emily Scarpa, Liz Scarpa, and Morgan Van Mader. Congratulations to both teams. And then we have one other athlete who could not be here tonight, but I just want to recognize her, Senior Alexandra Chekanova. She was a female wrestler, and she placed in the state championships in Atlantic City for the second straight year. So congratulations, Alexandra. That does it for me, so I think I'll call up Doc.
Okay, at this time, it is my pleasure to invite Dr. Louveta Ross, Principal of Freehold High School, to present our awards.
I am going to begin by inviting Ms. Makav to come and join us. Last year, I forgot to do that, so I'm going to do it first this year. While she's coming, I would like to once again thank the Board of Education and our Central Office Administration for this evening. It's a wonderful evening to celebrate our students, and I would love to wish a congratulations to all our students and parents and coaches and advisors for all the hard work that has taken place thus far. In his absence, Mr. Mel, we have a lot happening at the Borough with our sports during the spring season, so he's navigating a lot that's going on with, you know, the teams playing today, because we have everyone doing something somewhere. So in his absence, I just want to recognize him. Extracurriculars, let's start there. First, we have Andrew Chang Chin, All-Shore Jazz Band. Come on down. I would also like to invite Anya Sellers down for All-Shore Symphonic Band. The description of both of these awards have already been given, so we're just going to invite them down and celebrate them this evening. So congratulations once again. We have two members of HOSA, which stands for Health Occupation Students of America. I would like to invite them to come down, and I'll tell you what they've won as they come over. So Arnaud Bakataki won first place in the Behavioral Health Competition for HOSA, and Ariana Mani won for Research, Persuasive Writing, and Speaking Competition for HOSA. So congratulations to them. Now, moving on to athletics, we have Daniel Lipster. Come on down, Daniel. Our Daniel is on our swim team. He is First Team All-American. He's ranked number-one swimmer in the state of New Jersey. He is First Team All-State, 2024 Meet of the Champions in the Breaststroke, 2024 Shore Conference, and Monmouth County Champion, and he now holds five school records. I would also like to recognize his swim coach, Mr. Cooper. Coach Cooper, congratulations. At this time, I would like to invite Malatay Pressy to come on down. Malatay is the New Balance National All-American in high jump, and he's sixth in the nation. He is First Team All-State in the high jump, Meet of Champions number-one seed and winner in the high jump, Group Three Central Jersey Champion in the high jump, third in the Shore Conference and second in Monmouth County, and he just started last year. I would also like to shout out his coaches. I know Dr. Iluk is here, and I'm not sure if any of the other track coaches are here, but thank you so much. And I also want to also go back and just say thank you to Ms. DeeDee and Ms. Dona for HOSA, because they're here with us this evening. Now, I would like to invite our Boys Basketball Team to come on down. The Boys Basketball Team has the best record in school history with 24 wins and the Central Jersey State Sectional Championship. They won the Group Three semifinals over mainland, advanced to the Group Three Championship for the first time in school history. Coach Ben DeBais, who made it, as well as Coach Shaquille Richardson are here, but Coach Ben DeBais was named Shore Conference Coach of the Year by the Coaches Association and multiple media outlets. Here are our players' names for you. Christian Degizo, Brian Tassie, Farmir Everett, Aiden Hamlin Wolfoff, Sam Cranwell, William Hahn, Hayden Reed, Matthew Frede, Damiya Lester, Mike Hush, Jason Matthews, and Kay Casco. Congratulations. And that concludes the awards for the Freehold Borough. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Sean Curry up and thank him.
Good evening. My name is Sean Curry, the very proud Principal of Manalapan High School. First, I would like to thank our Board of Education, our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Hazel, as well as the entire Central Office Administration for providing our students with endless opportunities to pursue their dreams and help nurture our students in all that they desire as a Freehold Regional High School District. I would also like to congratulate all of our medal recipients tonight, and thank you for how you represent our district here on a daily basis. At this time, I would like to ask the Manalapan and English Town Board of Education Representatives, Ms. Jamie Bruna and Mrs. Diana Capiello to join me and present this to the Manalapan High School students. Our first three medal recipients were selected to attend New Jersey Governor's School this summer. Mr. Broberman, Principal of Howell, provided the description of the prestigious Governor's School program early this evening. I asked them to step forward at this time. Manalapan High School has two students who were selected to attend the Governor's School of New Jersey program in the sciences at Drew University. They are Stefano Daggostino and Chris Shaw. Additionally, Victoria Collemi was selected to New Jersey Governor's School of Engineering and Technology. Our next student, Robbie Tripathy, is being recognized as a finalist for the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. Each year, the top 50,000 PSAT students receive commendation letters for the National Merit Program. Approximately 15,000 of those commended students will be recognized as finalists. All finalists must have a record of high academic performance, be fully endorsed for finalist standing, and take the SAT or ACT and earned scores comparable to their semifinalist PSAT score. Congratulations, Robbie. We also have a second finalist that cannot be here this evening, that's Bernard Liang. Our next medal recipient is Sidney Jacobson. Sidney was selected as a finalist for the New Jersey Scholars Program, which is a tuition-free, five-week summer program for rising seniors. The mission of the New Jersey Scholars Program is to provide New Jersey's rising high school seniors of extraordinary demonstrated academic potential with a free, ungraded, diverse, inclusive, and residential interdisciplinary learning environment that sharpens critical thinking, writing, and research skills, stimulates a desire for lifelong learning, and fosters lasting interpersonal connections. Congratulations, Sidney. At this time, I would like to recognize Soketh Ayagari and Jonah Konavsky, who both scored a perfect 800 on the math portion of the SAT. Next, I ask all of our Math League Shore Conference Champions to make their way to the stage at this time. The following students successfully defended their title and are now back-to-back Math League Shore Conference Champions. They are Thea Abelur, Soketh Ayagari, Vikram Choudhury, Ryan Cohen, Stefano Daggostino, Ryan Edwards, Adarsh Kumar, Krish Patel, Chris Shaw, Savan Shah, Evan Su, and Robbie Tripathy. Congratulations. Finally, I would like to recognize our Allshore Jazz and Symphonic Band members. First, Allshore Jazz Band, Ritvik Soni. And for Allshore Symphonic Band, Aiden Linder and Connor Paskey. Congratulations, gentlemen. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our CICA, Ms. Beth English, who will recognize our student athletes and brave cast members.
At this time, I would like to call up to the podium the members of Brave Cast. That's achievements, sports statistics, extracurricular info, upcoming events, to foster involvement in our school community. The Manalapan Brave Cast took home a national award, being recognized as Mascot Media's Production, the Best School-Run Media Team. I would like to recognize the advisory, Mr. Joseph Girardi, who is the founder and advisor of Brave Cast. The members are Alexander Hand, Anthony Parisi, Jayla George, Madison Joya, Spencer Finkler, Rayanna Hubalter, Gracie Lynn Petter, Kalen Donovan, Stephen Russo, Shay Varga, Samuel Gacken, Ryan Turdo, Jacob Leiser, Arwin Rivera, Evan Su, Jimmy Gozinski, Maddie Clouser, Jenny Patzer, Luciano Federuso, Madalena Martinez, Kira Sullivan, Christopher Rayer, Gabrielle Gendy, and Emily Katz. At this time, I'd like Emily Katz to please step up. In addition to winning our best school media run, media team, Emily was recognized as Production MVP, also a national award. Congratulations, Brave Cast. Next, I would like to call up our Boys' Winter Track Team. Our Boys' Winter Track Team are the Central Jersey Group Four State Champions. Members are Clay Stevens, Steven Cavellis, Crew Brand, Suhan, Dia, Jonathan Weinberg, Ryan Goldberg, Justin Velosen, Michael Black, Philip Pace, Andrew Barone, and Tyler Perez. At this time, I'd like sophomore Clay Stevens to step forward. He took fifth place in the state in the 32-meter. And senior Stephen Cavellis, please step forward. Rutgers commit. He placed first in the 1600 in the Meet of Champions. Boys, and congratulations. Congrats. At this time, I would like to call up our Distant Medley Girls Team, please. Our medley team of Lola Yul, Olivia Schwannings, and Maddie Patard and Sadie Hoedig took seventh in the nation at Penn Relays and number one in New Jersey. Sadie, please step forward. Sadie also took sixth place in states at the 32-meter. All juniors, so watch out. Just watch out. Congratulations, girls. At this time, I'd like to call up our Ice Hockey Team. Our Ice Hockey Team got our first additional title, but more importantly, our South Jersey State Champions. They were also named Shore Conference Team of the Year. Their coach, Matt Indorella, was also named NJ.com Coach of the Year. All the boys were there. All the boys united the community, and we all made a trip to the Prudential Center, which was very fun for the overall state championship game. Team members are Jake Bender, Christian Esposito, Nick Venzia, Samuel Gacken, John Hanovic, Samuel Kaplan, Adam Keller, Josh Kushner, Thomas Lena, Luca Manino, Joseph Munch, Owen O'Donnell, Ryan Peters, Alfred Pacino, Vincent Holler, James Stevens, Zachary Sern, Daniel Yakov, Vincent Zanet. Christian Esposito, please step forward. Christian Esposito took first-team All-State public and third-team All-State overall All-State. It's a pretty big deal when you play the divisional goalie. So congratulations to everybody, and again, coach and the team. Congratulations. And back to Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Ms. English. At this time, I'd like to introduce the host school principal here this evening, Dr. David Lee.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Curry, and welcome, everybody, to Marlboro High School. Hope you're enjoying your stay with us this evening. Firstly, I'd like to thank our Board of Education, our Superintendent, Dr. Hazel, as well as the entire Central Office Administrative Team for all you do to support our schools and providing so many opportunities for our students to pursue their passions. At this point, I'd like to ask the Marlboro representative on the board, Mr. Michael Messinger, to join me in the presenting of medals to the Marlboro High School students. I also, since Marlboro High School is the last school to go, I do want to say thank you to this tremendous audience, because you have been so wonderful. Being the last school, it's so important to our students and their families that, you know, the same audience that was here for the presentations of awards to the earlier schools remains in place for them. So I really appreciate everybody's patience, and I'm so thankful to you to be here to see the Marlboro students be recognized as well. Also, a quick public service announcement. When we're done with the awards ceremony, in the lobby just outside the auditorium, there are two Freehold Regional High School Districts stepping repeats. Basically, that's a nice background for families to take photos. So they're both in the lobby on your way out this evening if you want to take photos of your child or teens and so on. Please do so. That's why they're there. All right. So first, from Marlboro High School, I'm going to ask Anika Badiya to come on up to the front. My colleague, Dr. Skelephos of Field Township, described what it means to achieve the distinction of Girl Scout Gold Award winner, and that Anika did achieve that distinction. For her service project, Anika focused on educating adolescents in nutrition and healthy eating. Among other things, Anika developed an informational website, as well as hosted seminars where she presented to groups of adolescents. Congratulations, Anika. The next group of students I'll call up to be recognized are the FBLA students. So the FBLA students from Marlboro High School, please come on up front. So FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. It is the largest business career-focused student organization in the world. FBLA inspires and prepares students to become community-minded business leaders through career preparation and leadership experiences. This winter, the FBLA students competed at the State Leadership Conference, and among many other impressive results, we had five students come in first place. So Nicholas Manorino was first-place Accounting One, Sean Gelman, first-place Accounting Two, Manav Vajani, first-place Business Management, Jake Spiller, first-place Computer Applications, and Jessica Mendez Alonso, first-place International Business. Congratulations to our faculty and students. The next group of students to be recognized are those that came in first place in the DECA Conference. So I'll ask our DECA students from Marlboro High School to make their way up to the front. DECA's mission is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Students are given a chance to compete in an event classified by industry and career cluster. The DECA competitive events involve both Career Cluster Exam and Role Play provided onsite with a judge. The first-place winners have distinguished themselves with stellar performance in all areas of the competition. So this year, we had Natalie Kriedoff, first-place Restaurant and Food and Service Manager. Congratulations, Natalie. We also had first-place Alyssa Hoffman, who was unable to be here this evening. She was first place in Accounting and Application. Next up from Marlboro High School are the Consumer Bowl students. I'll ask the Consumer Bowl students to make their way to the front. These students represent the Marlboro High School team that came in first place at the Monmouth County Consumer Bowl. The Consumer Bowl is a game show-style competition in which students answer consumer-related questions in multiple formats to test their knowledge of consumer issues. These students performed exceptionally well and collectively came in first place at this year's competition. They are Elon Abramson, Summer Adler, Sean Gelman, Chase Sussman, and David Tabak. Congratulations. Can you tell we have the Business Administration program at Marlboro High School? There's a theme here. Congratulations, guys. I will now turn it over to our CICA, Mr. Ride, who will recognize our musicians and our athletes.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. The first people I would like to come on down are our Allshore Symphonic Band members. The Allshore Band description was provided by Howell earlier in the program. We have Arav Desai, Alana Lee, Isabel Lacona Klein, Leah Treza, and Emma Ye. Congratulations, guys. And now, for the first time ever in Marlboro history, I would like to bring down our cheer team. The state cheer隊 competition was provided by Howell earlier in the program. The Marlboro High School cheer team is in a different division than Howell, and we took first place in the large mega-varsity state competition, first place. Members are Cliff Bass, Lee Bencia, Bencivenga, Chloe Burns, Ashley Caparzo, Mia Cuba, Sari Donner, Rachel Gershman, Leah Gigante, Julia Golin, Juliana Eichler, Marcela Catry, Cassie Kilcullen, Melanie Kaufman, Adriana Krauts, Elizabeth Levittman, Gianna Malicelli, Haley Omani...
Yeah, that's my sister. Y'all see her?
Hey, hey, that's my love right there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's me.
That's a cheer parent for you.
You're cool.
Brock, oh, that makes... Ellie Pisani, Alexa Pivici, Emily Steinberg, Francesca Tambourino, Taylor Trenacosta, and Emma Wildman. Congratulations, guys. That was good for this little meeting. And I'd like to bring back up Dr. Hazel.
Thank you so much. This was such a wonderful evening to recognize our students across the district. Again, I want to thank all of our parents and award recipients for your close attention this evening as we recognize all of the students across the district. Again, a special congratulations to all of our award recipients. Please enjoy your evening, and we have the stepping repeats in the lobby for you for some pictures. Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to start our meeting, and we're going to resume our meeting. Those are the great awards. One of the best I've seen in many, many years. So thank you for organizing that, everybody. Great. We're going to continue with our superintendent report.
Hey, good evening. I would like to update the board and our community. The Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee made changes to legislation allowing for the tax levy beyond the 2%. However, those changes do not impact the options discussed at our public hearing on April 25th. The modified bill was voted on by the Assembly and the Senate yesterday and was approved by the Governor today. This is great news. Tonight, though, the board will be looking to adopt a fiscal year 25 budget that was presented at our public hearing with a 2% tax levy increase. Since the legislation has been signed by the Governor, this board may consider amending the budget. At that time, we will probably reconvene another board meeting. We will get direction from the Department of Education on how that looks and how that gets handled, because actually, this evening, our budget needs to be submitted to the Department of Education. At that time, once we receive some direction from the Department of Education, we will be able to look at restoring positions that were eliminated due to some of our budgetary constraints. So we will have more information coming out to our community, probably in the coming days, once we receive guidance from the Department of Education. But good news that it passed the Assembly and the Senate and was signed by the Governor today. That was a very quick turnaround, and that positions us, positions this Board of Education, to make some further decisions regarding our budget moving forward. I'm just anticipating, I'm hoping everything can be kind of solidified before we leave, and that would be, you know, the end of June. We do have a board meeting scheduled at the end of June, Thursday evening, the 27th. But again, receiving direction from the Department of Education, we will act upon that as quickly as we possibly can. We are also excited, and you'll see on this board agenda, to announce that the Freehold Regional High School District has been awarded a grant. It is a Teacher, Climate, and Culture Innovation Grant. It's from the New Jersey Department of Education. It's for the period of May 1st through February 28th of 2025 into next school year. It's in the amount of $200,000. This grant was initiated and written in partnership with the Freehold Regional Education Association. Our president, who is actually here this evening, please stand, Sarah Reckenbecker, was instrumental in working with our offices at Central Office. This will enable the district to enhance teacher collaboration, streamline instructional planning, and create collaborative resources. This will provide substitute teacher coverage, and we look to develop a digital library of educational resources for our teachers. This will result in teachers having more time to focus on core instructional activities, and this will benefit our educators and our students. So we are really excited for this grant. We are going to work very closely with Mrs. Reckenbecker and our team, and we are excited to get started shortly, and there'll be some postings coming out for positions that will help us work through that grant. We have our executive student cabinet members here. We have our executive student cabinet members here, Nicole Cruz Morales, where are you? Okay, great, and Emma Corbin of Marlboro High School, and Nicole is from Freehold High School. We are preparing for a Middle States visit next school year. We have a visitation scheduled in the month of December, where an outside entity, Middle States Education, comes in and they really take a look at everything we are doing in the school district, and that provides us with accreditation, and it's a seven-year accreditation. I know we're just going to, you know, do absolutely fine. We had a systems team meeting on April 29th. It was the third meeting of our full systems team. In attendance were administrators, supervisors, teachers, support staff, as well as community members and board members. The district has outlined some work ahead with objectives, and when I reviewed the notes, our executive student cabinet is a part of this Middle States Systems Team. And when I reviewed their notes, I said, wow, they have everything in their notes that I wanted to speak to. So they are absolutely going to be able to share and cover, one, about their experience serving on that team, and the work that the district is partaking in as we prepare for Middle States and look to work of the objectives over a seven-year period. So I invite to the podium both Nicole and Emma to share about our Middle States.
Good evening. My name is Emma Corbin, and I'm a senior at Marlboro High School. Nicole and I represent the Executive Student Cabinet. The ESC works closely with the superintendent and serves as the student representatives on the Board of Education. This year, we are participating in the Middle States accreditation planning process for our Middle States visit in December of 2024. Our third systems team meeting was April 29th. During the meeting, we reviewed the three main objectives we've developed for the Middle States accreditation process. These include number one, improving student performance in mathematics and English language arts. One key step of this objective involves analyzing data to identify trends in areas needing additional support and developing additional support programs. Number two is expanding access to smaller learning communities. Specific steps include expanding dual enrollment opportunities and fostering stronger connections through mentoring and support programs. Number three is fostering stronger student connections within the school community, which includes ensuring students feel connected to at least one adult in their school and know where to go to for academic or social or emotional help. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Cruz Morales, and I'm a senior at Freehold High School. Looking back at this year, we accomplished a lot. We have finalized our core documents, our mission, core values, and profile of the graduate, which set the stage for our strategic work. We analyzed data from stakeholder surveys and outlined our objectives, ensuring they align with Compass 3.0, our district's strategic plan. Looking forward, each school will conduct their third component of school team meetings throughout May, providing the final sets of feedback on the action plans developed so far, which will be used to finalize the action plans that will guide the district's efforts over the next seven years. During the summer and early fall, the district and schools will complete document collection and final preparations for our Middle States visitation in December 2024. We really enjoyed serving on this Middle States full system team and offering student feedback to the process, and we are glad we are part of ensuring future FRHSD students to continue to have an amazing educational experience. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much. Mr. Burnout?
We do have one board report tonight. Mrs. Higley from Freehold Township, curriculum.
Good evening. The curriculum committee meeting was held on May 2nd, and a number of topics were discussed. First of all, there were 1,763 total applications to our magnet programs. Students are permitted to apply to two programs. Also, there is a large number of students who continue to be interested in the International Baccalaureate Program, which is flourishing. This year, HALL's IB program successfully underwent the IB five-year review, and next year, FTHS will undergo their second five-year review. Since the program's inception in the district, over 60% of students in each cohort have received the prestigious IB diploma. As a district, we are examining the multilingual learners program, including enrollment and curriculum development. The program is expanding and has changing needs. Curriculum is being developed this year for ESL 1 through 4, newcomers and transitional learners. There are 11 curriculums being written this school year across the content areas, a few to highlight. Public speaking is a new course and will fulfill the performing arts requirement. Peer leadership has been redesigned and is now titled Leadership in Action and focuses on real-world leadership skills. Multi-variable calculus will be offered as a dual enrollment course with Seton Hall University starting in the 24, 25 school year. 260 students participated in the FRHSD online SAT preparation courses school year district-wide. In addition, a grading committee has been established in the district to provide feedback and suggestions around grading practices to meet the goal of the strategic plan, to develop common district grading practices regarding the recording, calculating, and communicating of students' progress to improve consistency across the districts. The district's upcoming Middle States visitation is December 9th through the 12th. The three objectives, as you heard, have been approved by the Middle States Association. We will have a preliminary site visit on May 15th. FRHSD 2024 Summer Academy will be offering original credit, credit recovery, AP Bridge, and Algebra I Bridge. The registration process will continue throughout the spring. Students are encouraged to discuss these opportunities with the school council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple of people from the community. Budget, yes, why don't I go to the budget? I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 school budget.
Mr. Acetola, Mrs. Higley.
Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion.
I just wanted to make a comment before we come to vote. I'm thankful that the legislature and the state of New Jersey came through, if you want to say that, at, you know, this late hour of maybe 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock this afternoon. But as always, you know, they're lagging behind and leaving school districts in a very uncomfortable position. So based on the fact that they have done this at such a late date, the budget that's put forth today hopefully will be able to be revised as the legislature directs us as to, and the State Board of Education directs us as to what the next steps are, because this budget, this budget has things in it that we're losing that are very important. Okay. When you have to make cuts, it's a difficult decision. You try to make cuts that have the least impact on students, and of course, the most impact on finance. So it's a very difficult thing. I personally am not happy with a lot of the things that are going to be lost in the budget that we're going to vote on tonight, and as I said, I'm hopeful that as we move forward, we will be able to reinstitute and put back into place some of those things that are cut. But we are at the mercy of government, unfortunately. One of the big things that I'm upset about is the fact that the Raze Academy goes away. I find the Raze Academy has been very useful and helpful for our at-risk students. It's been running through a grant now, which the grant has now expired, so without changes to the budget, we will not be able to sustain it this upcoming year. And there are other things also. So I just wanted to put forth that, yes, we're voting on this, and, you know, probably most of us will vote in favor, but I'm hopeful that there will be better things coming in the next weeks that will allow us to reinstate some things that we have to cut. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other board member would like to discuss, any discussion, any more discussion on the budget? Not hearing anything? Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnout?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Burnout? Yes. We do have some people in the community who'd like to participate tonight. We do have a change in the agenda, Mr. Vois?
Yeah, just one change on the printed agenda for resolution K1, which is approval of professional conferences and workshops. Please change, board, the entry for Bruce Henneker's June 24th PD from $125 to $150, and that's the only change.
Thank you. Okay, I think I can go, can move along here now. We do have some people who've signed up to speak, and Liam and Lindsay, and you're from what school?
Real Township.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Board of Education. Is it working?
Yeah.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Liam Marriott. I'm a senior at Real Township High School and a member of the IB program, and I along with many of my peers here today. Are here to express our extreme disappointment caused by the decision to cut the positions filled by Mr. Fusco at Real Township High School, such as the IB Coordinator, Web Design Pathway Coordinator, Science Coordinator, and Math Coordinator. We recognize this was done due to the budget reduction, and that is not a matter of Mr. Fusco being deemed as an ineffective addition to the FRHSD staff, but we hope that these new budget amendments that have just been presented by the board, the possibility of Fusco being brought back to our school could be discussed. Regardless, we still find it relevant here to express our distaste in the present decision and why we believe Mr. Fusco is an indispensable member of the FRHSD community, if for no other reason than to bring to your knowledge the importance of Mr. Fusco at our school. As an IB student, I know firsthand how essential it is to have a coordinator at our school and not share between two, as the new plan would imply. Mr. Fusco was essential in helping my environmental science guys, the first time this stuff was offered ever at the IB level at Township, and the only one-year IB course offered, transitioned into this new study, and helped our teacher, whose first year was teaching an IB course. During the IB testing as well, the communication and connection between the students and Mr. Fusco made for a smoother and more competent testing period, which is something that would likely not be attainable if Township shares a coordinator with Howell. Fusco's importance to our school community and to our programs comes not just from the general benefits of having a supervisor that can focus on these programs that he has assigned overseas, but the connection that he has formed with us as a consequence of his position. Again, environmental science as a year was a big part of the reason why this issue regarding Mr. Fusco was so important to us. Dedication and care he showed for us in his new class displayed just how much he puts in the program he has, and also that it resonated with us and the effort that we put into our program as well, and we would not have been as confident on our exams and essays we had to write if not for the benefit and direction that he provided us, despite also being new to the inner work with the IB program.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Lindsay Goldner, and I'm a senior in the IB program at Real Township High School. I am here to speak on behalf of Mr. Fusco and his position as the IB coordinator. First, I would like to talk a little bit about myself. I'm your typical anxiety kid, a high-strength perfectionist who hates change. When I heard a new IB supervisor would be overseeing our program at the end of sophomore year, I expected the worst. This was going to be the official start of the program with a stranger I knew nothing about. I was pleasantly surprised, and to say my transition at the IB program was seamless would be an understatement. Mr. Fusco personally introduced himself and went out of his way to work each and every one of our exams. He explained how even though this process seemed scary, we would get through it together. Because of Mr. Fusco, I felt guided throughout the entire program without any doubt that I would fall off track. He is a caring, open-minded, and well-respected coordinator that I'm happy to have spent my last two years of high school with. With his office being only a few steps away on the second floor, the presence of a coordinator in our school was beyond compare. You may be wondering as a senior, who this has no effect on why I'm standing up here today. I want to make the impact that Mr. Fusco has had on this program though. I want every single student in the IB program at Real Township High School to have the same experience I have with Mr. Fusco. This program needs him and would not be the same without him. Please consider how much each and every one of my peers has been inspired by this amazing teacher and why we are here today. This is more than just a program. Mr. Fusco shapes our IB family and forms the relationships that we have with each other today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming out to speak about your experiences and your work over at Freehold Township High School under the support and leadership of Mr. Fusco, who I'm sure has made a tremendous impact on all of you. So we appreciate hearing your words here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak? No one else? Okay. Oh, okay.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Anastasia Joseph, and I am an IB junior in the program. I'm here to talk about Mr. Fusco as well and his contributions to the International Baccalaureate Program at my school. I'm going to start my speech by reminiscing about last year when I was a sophomore. I was not planning on doing IB, and I did not think I was cut out for it. However, after numerous conversations with Mr. Fusco, I ended up signing up, and it was the best thing that could have happened to me and my academic career. Now I'm a junior in the program. Although I still, although I was not able to adjust fully and was having a hard time balancing the workload at first, Mr. Fusco was always there to lend a helping hand throughout the entire process. I do not think I would have been able to continue in this program if Mr. Fusco was not there to help me and all the other students. Present day, I am the first graduating class that has to pay for our exams, and if, and we are, if you guys get rid of Mr. Fusco, it is lowering the quality of the program substantially, because now they're going to have a hard time adjusting and succeeding in the program, and they have to pay for it. Mr. Fusco would be there every step of the way for them, just like he was for me. I think I speak for all the IB juniors when I say we appreciate him very much and would hate to see him go. Not only had he helped us achieve academically through all the things he's done in the program and through making sure that we are prepared for college, but he has also helped us mentally through practicing, time management, and the systems he has put in place in our school. The community as well, and the International Program are very important to him, and it is shown through his work and dedication to us. And I would urge you to reconsider your decision to keep Mr. Fusco at FTHSD.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we're going, anybody else? I missed a, I missed a Fusco? Okay.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Emmanuel Canal, and I'm an IB junior at Real Township High School. I just want to speak on Mr. Fusco, because I feel like, to me personally, he's a very enthusiastic person, especially when he puts his work and dedication towards the IB council. Being in, like, to me personally, being on the IB council, I work with him closely, so I understand like what he does and the effort he puts into these programs. Especially to me personally, I'm a person who shows a knack, especially with the IB program. And Mr. Fusco has aligned out of his ways most of the time to put effort towards me as a student, and went on the way to set up things for me, set up teachers for us that I could better succeed in the program. When I see Mr. Fusco presenting, or presenting like his teachers or students, I see that he puts a lot of enthusiasm into his speaking that is unmatched. I can tell from Mr. Fusco on personal, on a personal level, that he is very enthusiastic about what he does, and he speaks very powerful on the program and students, and I can tell that he really cares about everyone who's involved with the program.
Thank you. Okay. We could be here all night, so come on.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ben DiNatale. I'm from Freehold Township High School, and I am like a lot of people here are not from IB. However, Mr. Fusco has been influential in my life recently. I was at the IB art exhibit, and he was present there. He mistakenly, he mistaken me for a sophomore, and then went on a tangent about the wonderful opportunities that IB offered, as well as how me, just for looking at me and my personality, how I could fit. And I understand the budget cuts are not something you guys directly can control, but I'm asking you not only on behalf of Freehold Township students, but on behalf of myself and other Freehold Township students to come to fight for an increase in the budget, fight to keep teachers, fight to end the 30-plus transfer. fight to end the 30-plus transfers of teachers going out of Freehold Township and to most importantly, fight to keep education equitable and equal for us. It's because when we cut the budget, when we transfer teachers, we are eliminating integral programs that helped many students at our school. I'm sorry for the stutter in my voice because this is a very emotional topic for me as I know two teachers are going to be transferred away from a program that was integral in my life, Speech and Debate, which is a club and two advisors are going to be leaving Freehold Township. And now the team that I've built three years with other people in the audience, now a team that I am a current board member of, now a team that I've worked and competed on for many years in my high school career, is going to need to scavenge for new advisors and is going to need to leave these people that have been very helpful and helped us grow, not only publicly, but academically. So I want to close this off by thanking you for the time and also urging you to please fight for these students, fight for Freehold Township staff members, and fight for an increase in the budget. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to try to get the agenda here. We're going to take G1 through G15. I have a motion to approve G1 through G15. I've heard one down there, Mr. Acetola, and I've heard a second, Mrs. Capiello. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, roll call. Mr. Acetola? Mrs. Bruno?
Ms. Bruno, is it no to all or because we're doing G1 to G15?
So I'm just going to say to G15.
Okay, G15, okay, good. And just for clarity, is it yes to the rest?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Um, yes on everything except on G7. I abstain from Michael Capiello, Michelle England, Brian Post, Pete Meehan, Craig Churn, Merle Norwich, and Jeffrey Broderman. And in G13, I abstain from Rachel Gao and Merrill Norwich and I think I'm done.
Ms. McCaff?
Yes, with the exception of G15.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, with the following exceptions. Uh, G6, G7, I abstain for Charles Kraszewski, Matthew Verdini, Michael Lazzone, Pat LaGravinaus, Matthew Colson, Kim Branley, Pete Meehan, Craig Churn, Michelle England, Brian Post, Jeremy Broderman, Joanne Becker, Carol Kraszewski, Rachel Gao, David Fusco, Christopher Provo, Chabri Dow, Michael Dillon, Leann Reckenwald, Alicia Salsa. For G13, I abstain for Rachel Gao and Merrill Norwich.
Yes.
And yes.
Yes to everything.
Okay, just making sure.
Thank you, Mr. Messinger? Mr. Bruno? Yes. Okay, give us just a moment.
All motions pass.
Thank you, I was holding my breath there. Okay, I'll breathe now. All right, we're going to go to H. I have a motion to approve H1 through I4. That's Program Operations Building Transportation and Physical Plan. I'll offer that. Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion, roll call. Mr. Acetola? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Higley? Ms. McCaff? Mr. Messinger? Mr. Bruno? Okay, we're going to take J1 through K5, Educational Program and Administration.
Second.
Mrs. Capiello, second, Ms. McCaff.
Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion, roll call. Mr. Acetola? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello?
Yes on everything except in K1 and K3, I abstain from Dr. Hazel.
Mrs. Higley?
Uh, yes, and everything except K1 and K3, I abstain for Shawn Boys and Dr. Hazel.
Ms. McCaff? Mr. Messinger? Mr. Bruno?
All motions pass.
Thank you. Did any board members have old business to discuss? Any old business to discuss? Not hearing any old business, any new business? I do have one today. Dr. Hazel and I were at the luncheon for MedSci on Freehold Borough and Mr. Messinger, you're going to be very happy to hear that 16 out of the 22 kids at the MedSci program, seniors, we're going right first.
Wow, yes, absolutely.
It was a great day and just nice to see the kids. CenterState gave $19,000 in scholarship to the MedSci students today and that's an incredible contribution that CenterState gives to our school.
I gave some of that out of my paycheck.
But, and they were there today, a lot of the people from CenterState were there in administration to give out the awards.
Mr. Bruno? I just want to once more congratulate all of the athletes, the teams, the scholars, and all of the students who were awarded and recognized today for their great job in whatever field they pursue.
Thank you.
And can I just mention that I think Manalton just broke a record with our lacrosse program, boys and girls just advanced, so I'm really proud of them and proud of Manalton.
Thank you. Any other new business? Not hearing any, we're going to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Any adjourn?